Good afternoon, welcome to the Board of Commissioners' special call to begin our work session for November 24th, 2015. Our first tab is Cobb County Transportation Agency. We have two items directed at Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners and County Manager, our first item is to present information regarding the Cobb Community Transit Route 10X Implementation Plan. Bill Ball, Chief Operating Officer of Tyndall Oliver and Associates, will be presenting. Before he does, just a little background. In the summer of 2013, the City of Marietta, in partnership with Southern Polytechnic Institute, now KSU, and Life University, completed a livable centers initiative study, and the study included a transportation recommendation to create a transit route focused on serving the universities, linking students and other patrons between downtown Atlanta and Cobb County. Also, as indicated in the agenda item, on May 27th, 2014, the Board approved memorandums of agreement with SPSU and Life University to participate in the development and funding of the CCT Route 10X Implementation Plan, which we are going to be discussing today. In the fall of 2013, the Department applied for and was awarded a federal grant to fund the estimated operating cost of the 10X service for three years should the Board authorize the proposed service to be implemented in the future. It includes CMAC funds as well as other local match. The consultant has evaluated several transit service options relating to travel time, ridership potential, transit market coverage, demand for activity center connectivity, and overall cost. Look forward to sharing that with you today, and it was shared with the Transit Advisory Board last evening.
All right, before we get going, I forgot to do some house cleaning. Commissioner Burrow.
Commissioner Cooper.
I'm sorry, I was told that Commissioner Burrow.
I'm sorry. I didn't know Commissioner Cooper was governor.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Burrow. I just wanted to share that today we have an honorary member of the Board of Commissioners who is here. We have Ms. Harper Keaton debuting at 10 weeks old today for us with assistance of Mom Bianca Keaton. We are so happy to see you and babies, how beautiful she is. We're glad to put you both to work.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and visiting us today.
How can you compete with that?
My apologies, sir.
No problem. Again, just to remind you, my name is Bill Ball. I'm with Tyndall Oliver, and I've been working closely with staff and the Transit Advisory Board and the Stakeholder Group on the Route 10X Implementation Plan. What we wanted to do today is give you a briefing of the project, give you a sense of where we are, and answer any questions that you might have. This is what we're going to cover briefly in the presentation, stepping back to the objectives, a little bit about study area, and then what we did in terms of developing and evaluating alternatives, coming up with the preferred alternative that we'll talk about today, and then some initial thoughts on the implementation plan. If you look at our project objectives, this is basically our charge was to lay out a more premium bus route that tries to accomplish these items on this slide. Number one is how do we reduce travel time on this corridor, US 41, I-75 corridor, to make it a more competitive transit trip? Number two relates to can we help with the overcrowding that occurs at certain times of the day on the current local Route 10? Number three is can we attract more choice riders? Can we get more people that have an automobile to choose to use the transit service with this more premium bus service? Number four is basically related to testing the viability of this type of service on a route here in Cobb County, and perhaps it has viability on other corridors if it makes sense on this particular route. And then number five, taking a look at if we were to establish Route 10X, what are the implications for this service on other routes in the system? This was the study area that we started with. It basically covers the, from Kennesaw State University on the north, all the way down through Marietta, through Cumberland into Midtown Atlanta. And you can see that we basically covered the I-75, US 41 Cobb Parkway corridor, and looked at opportunities for providing a more competitive transit trip from length to length on that corridor. We started out with five initial alternatives that we evaluated. Won't go into all the details with these unless you have questions, but the basic goal was to balance mobility and access. Mobility being the fastest trip possible, access being providing access at certain stop locations along the corridor. And the more stops you provide, the less mobility you have, so it's a balance as we go through this premium bus analysis. And we looked at the operating characteristics of those initial alternatives. You see the frequencies and the hours of service that we assumed in the initial evaluation. These were the evaluation criteria we used to take a look at those initial alternatives, and they really tie back to those project objectives that I talked about in the earlier slide. Travel time is perhaps the most important one, followed by ridership, transit market, connectivity, and cost. By connectivity, between the major activity centers on our corridor study area, and then of course, cost. Our initial evaluation resulted in the recommendation of actually Alternative C, which was the one that's associated with the use of express lanes when they become available on I-75. Since they won't be here till perhaps the fall of 2018, our second highest alternative was Alternative E, and we took Alternative E and worked with the Transit Advisory Board, with the Stakeholder Group, and with staff to come up with some enhancements to that alternative that you see on this slide here. Basically adding a couple of more stop locations, and taking advantage of technology if the county decides to pursue more signal priority technology for transit if you move in that direction, and then also the use of the HOV lane on I-75 from Acres Mill and getting off at Northside, which is consistent with what you'll hear on the Route 10 here later in the meeting today. To give you an illustration of that preferred alternative, this illustrates what we would serve in the stop locations. It would start at the Big Shanty Park and Ride to the north, travel down I-75, go over to the Marietta Transfer Center, and then it would stay on Cobb Parkway for a bit, stopping at KSU Marietta, as well as Windy Hill Road, and then down to the Cumberland Transfer Center, where it would get on the HOV at Acres Mill and head into Midtown Atlanta, stopping at the Arts Center, and then on to Midtown Station. And I will say that we made decisions about additional station locations based on access to the universities that were part of the Stakeholder Group in this process. So the Big Isle Bus that is operated by KSU and Kennesaw would serve that, already passes by the Big Shanty Park and Ride, so there's a connection there, and then all the way down at the, we went down to the Midtown Station because the Georgia Tech bus shuttles would be able to provide that connection to the Midtown Station as well. And then, of course, we're serving KSU and Marietta as well. Wanted to give you a sense of the travel time difference. If you were to travel the length of this corridor today, it would take you riding the 40, transferring to the Route 10. There's about 70 to 75 potential stops in the local bus route system, and that ride would take you about two hours, 120 minutes, to go the length of the corridor. With the Route 10X, we would be able to reduce that to about 90 minutes, and we would be able to get you further into Midtown at the Midtown Station. So we're saving about a half hour, conservatively estimated. Tough to estimate travel times on that corridor, given the congestion that occurs at different times of the day, but our best estimate is that you would save about a half hour if you traveled the length of the corridor. Just briefly on the implementation plan, the thought is to have the discussion with the Commission today, come back in January with looking for adoption of the plan, and then if we iron out the funding options, we could potentially order buses later in the spring if you decided to move forward with this service. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Great presentation, actually. Is there any questions? Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Is there any discussion or consideration? The Board has been looking at the circulator plans. I know that the effort here is to try to have a more expeditious route from KSU downtown. Is there any thought about either the Cumberland Transfer Station or whatever, having the circulators pass through there, so folks are on, kind of coming in on the circulator, they can hop on 10X?
That would be my understanding, is that that connection would occur with the Cumberland service that's planned for the future, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
You may have shared this. With the 10X route, are there going to be no stops between the Marta Station and Big Shanty? It's just going to be one express?
No. If you look back at the map, we have seven stop locations indicated on this map, and they're labeled on this map. So you see Big Shanty is where it starts, then it would stop at Marietta Transfer Center, then it would stop at KSU and Marietta. Then it would stop at Windy Hill Road, then the Cumberland Transfer Center, then Arts Center, then Midtown Station.
It's just straight through from Cumberland.
So seven locations versus, if you looked at the routes that you take today, it's about 70 to 75 stops.
Okay. How would access to Route 10 be different than Route 10X, say at the Cumberland Transfer Center? Could people hop on the 10X as opposed to the 10?
Well, the advantage, if you're traveling to, again, we picked these seven stations as stop locations on the 10X because they're the most heavily utilized of the stop locations on the 10 and the 40 today, which means that if you're going to one of these locations, you would take the 10X to get there more quickly. Now, if you're looking to get at stops in between, then you would still have the Route 10 available to you to get to those stops in between these major stations. So you would have the option of choosing which one works best for you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Your next item, please.
Our next item is to present information regarding the Cobb Community Transit Route 10 Performance Evaluation. Glenn Waters, Senior Planner with Kinetics Transportation Group, will be discussing the evaluation that was performed. Route 10 is one of several local routes currently operated by CCT. It is a route that experiences extremely heavy ridership loads. As you know, we've talked, discussed with the Board in the past that this is one of the highest volume bus routes in the southeastern United States, very successful route. So Glenn will be presenting the evaluation of the route and making recommendations for improving its service operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. As Fay mentioned, my name is Glenn Waters, and I'm with Kinetics Transportation Group out of Roswell, and we are part of the Parsons Brinkerhoff team that has been providing an on-time performance and capacity analysis of CCT's Route 10. For those of you that may not be familiar with Route 10, the service is the workhorse of the CCT system, carrying nearly 1 million passenger trips, or just over 25% of CCT's overall system-wide ridership every year. The service operates along Cobb Parkway between the Marietta Transfer Center and the Cumberland Transfer Center, just adjacent to the Cumberland Mall. From there, the route continues south on US 41, crossing the Chattahoochee to I-75 to its final destination at Marta's Arts Center Station. If you've driven through any portion of this route, you've likely noticed that traffic has been on the increase, particularly during the morning and afternoon rush hours. Of course, this has had a negative impact on Route 10's on-time performance, which has also created crowding conditions where buses are fully loaded with standees when traveling on the interstate. Our goal in this analysis is to identify the root causes of these issues and recommend swift, cost-effective corrective actions. Our approach has been very much data-driven, using both quantitative and qualitative inputs. Our team has conducted an inventory of every Route 10 trip for weekday and Saturday service. Thus, we have a pretty good idea of which stops are the most and least utilized. We also measured the actual arrival and departure times at each time point so that we could better understand the pace at which the bus travels through the corridor. Our team spent time at some of the major boarding points to observe loading patterns and impacts to crowding when a bus would arrive late. And finally, we interviewed CCT and administrative DOT staff from the frontline bus operations all the way to the administration to see if their perceptions were in line with the data that we received. The map you see is just a sample of some of the data that we produced. Each dot represents one of Route 10's bus stops. The purple dots are the least utilized, while the red dots are the most heavily utilized. You'll see the Marietta Transfer Center at the top, the Cumberland Transfer Center, and the Arts Center Station, each represent more than 300 boardings per weekday. Honorable mention also goes to Windy Hill Road, where Routes 10 and 15 connect, the stop near Target, and the stop on the western edge of the Cumberland Mall near Sears. As far as capacity is concerned, we learned that Route 10's demand falls somewhat outside of the traditional rush hour. We observed crowding starting closer to the 1 o'clock hour, while Route 10's frequency doesn't improve for the afternoon rush until about 2:30. Likewise, we also saw that the morning peak demand is much more concentrated, giving us room to reallocate trips to times when demand is greater. And finally, we saw firsthand the correlation between late buses and the crowding conditions on Route 10. Afternoons at Arts Center are particularly vulnerable. When buses are able to maintain a consistent 15-minute frequency, the platform is cleared, and the crowd slowly builds for the next bus. But we saw that when a bus arrived late, the crowding would swell to a point that took nearly an hour to recover. So we're pretty well convinced that if the on-time performance can be repaired, then the overcrowding conditions will also be corrected. So what did we learn about Route 10's on-time performance? The upper end of the schedule is relatively accurate and only needs a little bit of fine tuning. That would be the portion between Marietta and Cumberland. We also found that there's a little bit of slack in the schedule on the approach into Cumberland. Unfortunately, that slack can be shifted to the more volatile segment between Cumberland and Arts Center Station. Now, the team looked at three approaches to correcting Route 10. The first was to maintain the service exactly as it operates today, and simply add more buses to meet the necessary running times. This would have been the most costly option, plus it would not have addressed the variability in the I-75 traffic. The second option would modify the route to take advantage of the Acres Mill HOV ramp. Currently, Route 10 does not utilize the HOV lanes because of all the merging back and forth that needs to occur between the Northside Parkway ramp and 14th Street, where the route currently enters and exits the interstate. Accessing the HOV lanes via Acres Mill would allow the bus to safely access the lanes without having to power across all of that traffic twice. Option three would also take advantage of the Acres Mill HOV ramp, but would also create a limited stop service where every other trip during the peak periods would only service the most popular five or six stops in the corridor. After reviewing the pros and cons with CCT and DOT staff, a modified version of option two was selected to move forward. This option would not only take advantage of the HOV access at Acres Mill Road, but would also utilize the HOV access point at Northside Drive in Atlanta. Doing so also creates potential for up to three stops in the Atlantic Station area. This alignment is consistent with the proposed Route 10X alignment that you just saw previously in the presentation, making it all the more seamless when that service is brought online. I should also point out that there are three stop pairings between Acres Mill and the Chattahoochee that would no longer be served by Route 10. However, they would still be served by Marta's Route 12. Each of these stops showed minimal boarding activity, and the directions of boardings and lighting suggest that those riders are bound for Marta anyway. Regardless, they will not be without transit service. So the map you see shows the recommended alignment. The route is the same as it is today between Marietta and Cumberland Boulevard, will turn a block early to make its way to the Transit Center. From there, it continues across Acres Mill Road to I-75, exiting at Northside Drive, and then across 17th Street to Arts Center Station. As far as the Route 10 schedule goes, we'll be consolidating two time points to better accommodate connections at Windy Hill Road. Running times will be adjusted to reflect today's conditions. The morning and afternoon peak periods will be adjusted to better fit with demand, plus a special trip will be added in the mornings to accommodate the heavy 7:30 AM ridership. Fortunately, we're able to maintain the same number of buses, except for the afternoon when traffic is at its worst. During those times, another bus and another 15 minutes will be added to the schedule. Because we were able to shift resources from underutilized periods, the estimated cost increase to correct Route 10 is just over $68,000 annually. Most of that cost is attributed to the extra bus in the afternoons. Now, throughout this project, our goal has been to fix Route 10 and fix it fast. We have a few more steps to make that happen, but we're on track to implement the service adjustment with the May market next spring. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll take questions.
Good job, Glenn. Any questions on the Board?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, can you share how, excuse me?
Yes, how are you?
I'm great, how are you, Commissioner Cooper?
Good, good.
Good to see you.
Yes, likewise. Appreciate all of your work with the flex system and see the improvements in the area. I'm curious to know with the addition of the bus and the PM trip, you stated that the route was extremely volatile and difficult to predict. How does adding another bus help to reduce that during peak time?
It gives us a little bit extra recovery time. Right now, it takes about two hours to run the route, which means it doesn't give you any extra time to load at the end of the line, or for any hiccup or delay in travel to occur. It's just the scheduled travel time in the afternoon is flat, one hour out and one hour back. So adding that 15 minutes gives you a little bit of a buffer. Typically, you want to put about 15% recovery time or labor time in a schedule, just to allow for those unexpected things that occur.
Okay.
Things like wheelchair boardings, other things that delay the route.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Glenn. Good job.
Thank you.
Director, that concludes your tab, correct? Would you be kind enough to send these PowerPoints to each of the Commissioners? Thank you so much. It takes us to tab two, Human Resources. Mr. Hagler?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. We started a pay study with the Archer Group that was initiated in August of 2014, and we've asked the principal for the group to come address the Board as to the status of the study, Chip King, so he's here to make a presentation to the Board.
Thank you. Mr. King.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the Archer Company, I appreciate the invitation to come and give you all a, hopefully, brief update on where we've been with the class and comp study, and to prepare you for the steps ahead with our timeline in the next couple of months. I apologize that I'm not quite as attractive as the Commissioner of Honor today, but I hope you can bear with me for a little while. My name is Chip King, I'm with the Archer Company. I am the Project Manager for the study. I guess I do have a, thank you. Regarding the purpose and the overview, I've got, want to spend just a brief period of time reminding you a little bit of what we're trying to accomplish and how we're getting there, culminating with a progress report, an update of what we've accomplished, and where we anticipate being for the next couple of weeks ahead. If you look at the purpose of the study, really, when we do a comprehensive classification and compensation study, there's two questions that we're trying to ascertain. One, when we look at all the positions, are they properly classified according to the complexity of the work and the duties and responsibilities of the jobs? Are the classifications ranked and placed into your pay plan in accordance with the value that those positions have in the organization? That's what we call internal equity. And then the second question has to do with the competitiveness of the pay plan, of the county's pay plan, in the market, which of course speaks directly to your ability to recruit and retain talent. And so the focus of the study is primarily there. There's a lot of individual components, a lot of pieces to the study, but that is the primary, those are the two primary questions that we're trying to accomplish. If you look briefly at internal equity, it's an analysis of all the positions in the organization. The study was comprehensive, it includes all the positions, both those underneath the Board of Commissioners, but also those in the constitutional offices as well. And looking individually at every position, we'll be making recommendations for the proper classification of the positions, and ultimately, we'll be making determinations for proper pay grade placement of each of those positions. It's important for you all to know and understand that when it comes to pay grade recommendations, there is a very objective and valid process that we use to make those determinations, because of course, where you fall into a pay grade has a direct impact on the value of that position and how you pay employees. So it's important that there's a correlation between the value of that position in the organization to the level of pay that you set for it. Internal equity is very critical in the process to make sure that there's fairness within the county, looking across departments, looking across positions, to make sure that you've got some fairness in the way pay is set from the pay plan perspective. And so internal equity is a very important part of this process, and job evaluation is a key element of that. I won't bore you with great details. If you all do have questions, I'll be glad to spell it out in a little bit more detail. But basically, the evaluation process is a means by which we can objectively determine that process for you, determine those relative rankings. Up on the slide also is an overview of our methodology for the market analysis. When we do a competitive analysis of your market, basically, we're talking about a salary survey. We first start by identifying who the peer organizations that would best represent this county. We look at establishing benchmarks that are representative of the pay plan overall, and then we compile data to determine what the prevailing wages are for similar positions in the peer organizations that can be said to reflect the market data for each classification. It's a benchmark process. We don't gather market data on every classification in the county. That's more of a logistical process. There's a reason, the reason for that is mostly logistical. It becomes very tedious to try to gather market data on every single position, every single classification. But if you choose your benchmarks properly, and you look for jobs that are representative of the organization across the Board, you can find that the market data you collect for your benchmark data is very representative of the county's pay plan across the Board. You can see from this that we took kind of a three-pronged approach. We looked primarily at Metropolitan Atlanta as being your main competitive base, and to represent the Metropolitan Atlanta area, we focused primarily on the large organizations. I'll list them for you in just a minute. But we did also survey a regional base as well to make sure that we got the flavor of larger governments in the southeast, to make sure that we weren't missing anything in Cobb's relation to Metropolitan Atlanta and the size and nature of the government. We also are looking at published data to capture the flavor of the private market as well. So that three-pronged approach should service pretty well in our representative findings for the county. Part of the market analysis, of course, is also benefits analysis. We're working on that, and we'll be completing it very soon. Once we have the internal equity established, the, all the positions have been reviewed, classified, and placed into pay grades, and then we have benchmark data representing the competitive market for our benchmark positions, we go about the process of developing a pay plan that blends elements of both of those, both sides of that equation. The goal here is to have a pay plan that balances internal equity concerns with market competitiveness issues. And as we go about doing it, we attempt to customize the pay plan in a way that best reflects this organization. So when we look at developing pay plan recommendations for Cobb County, we're looking at how we define the market within which you compete, where the county wants to be relative to that market. Do you want to be a lead, a leading organization? Is it enough to keep up? How do you, how do you see yourselves relative to your peers in the market that we define? And then, of course, we're looking at things like pay grade structure, pay range structure, to determine the best blend of a pay plan recommendations that will serve the county, and then ultimately- and then ultimately, will terminate in implementation recommendations as to how you implement and move forward. Again, the concept there is a balance between the two. So you'll see a mix of making sure that the pay plan is competitive across the board, but also that it addresses internal issues. As we work through this, the end result of the study should be that you have a pay plan that represents up-to-date classifications, that positions are properly classified based on duties, responsibilities and complexity of the job. The pay plan will reflect the desired level of competitiveness that Cobb County wants to maintain in the market. And then ultimately, in relation to that, you'll have things like new class specs, recommendations for the benefits package, and a pay plan that addresses all these positions. It's an important thing to mention here as we get towards the end of the study, of course. Employees start to perk up and pay particular attention. It's a good opportunity to remind the board and to remind the county population as a whole what we said at the very beginning of this process. Anytime you do a pay study, obviously, you're looking at pay. We're trying to make recommendations relative to the structure and classification of positions. But it's important that you all know that we've attempted throughout this process to communicate to employees that there are no guarantees. Obviously, we're looking at pay as part of this process, but it may or may not result in an increase for employees as we go forward. I think that's an important thing to just take a moment to reflect in this presentation. There are no guarantees in this process, but we are going to make sure that recommendations are fair, that they're objective and valid as we move forward. A little bit about where we've been and what we're up to as we round what I hope is the downhill portion of the study. The original targeted completion of this project was December 2015. We are behind schedule on that, but we are working as rapidly as we can to catch up. We've got a revised schedule that should bring the recommended pay plan to the board late February with the expectation or the ask that you'll take action of it in March. So everything that we've done in the revised timeline is moving towards that direction. Of course, throughout this process, when you see project management, it's just a reminder that we've been meeting with various stakeholders throughout the process to keep in touch and to gather information along the way. That includes multiple meetings with the Oversight Committee and multiple meetings with the Compensation Committee at various points. We're probably due for a meeting with the Oversight Committee, so I'll work with Tony to get something scheduled. Part of the process initially included an employee satisfaction survey, which we have done a lot of work on preparing. Right now, it's on hold, and we're going to work on finishing the results of the pay and class study. From an internal equity standpoint, we've received and analyzed over 3,000 questionnaires from all the employees. That represents the bulk of the 5,000, roughly 5,000 employees, as many questionnaires cover multiple positions. Obviously, there are some positions for which we've had to go back and get additional information and follow-up for, and we've been working on that as we go. At various times, we've met with the department heads to review operations, to obtain an understanding of how they work and their reporting structures, and to get their feedback relative to the classification and compensation study and how it will impact their department. We've spent a lot of time doing employee interviews. We've still got... That's probably the one area that we're farthest behind in, and we look to catch up on that in the next couple of weeks. I've committed to Tony to getting those completed this month in the first couple of weeks of December. We have completed questionnaires, or I'm sorry, interviews in about a third of the departments, including public safety and the ones you see listed, DOT, water, and some others. Next on that list will be Parks and Recreation, some of the courts, and then we'll start focusing on other departments as well. Throughout this process, as we classify the positions, we're working on the job evaluations to piece the internal equity recommendations together. We have established a preliminary grade structure, which we're testing internally to make sure it's going to work across all aspects of the organization, it's going to meet the needs of this, of the county moving forward, and we'll be bringing that to the county for review in January. We've completed the major portion of the market analysis. As I mentioned before, we're focusing on benchmarks. We've identified about 170 benchmarks that we've worked from, and we're utilizing data from those three levels that we talked about, locally, regionally, and then private sector. When we look at the 170 benchmarks, we're focusing on Metropolitan Atlanta as being the primary competitive base for all of the benchmarks in the county across the board. But when it comes to looking from a regional basis, we're focused more on management-type positions, senior-level professional-type positions, to reflect the competitive nature of those positions on a more regional basis. And then, of course, we are factoring in private sector data as we go. I've got the organizations listed here. On the left-hand side would be the local market representing Metropolitan Atlanta. On the right-hand side, you'll see the five organizations that we surveyed regionally for, the management and executive-level positions, and then just a nod to the Economic Research Institute, which is our source for private sector data as well. High level... There we go. I moved too soon. High level, the preliminary findings in the market so far, and before I go through this, I do want to just put a couple disclaimers in here. Obviously, this is a work in progress. Even as we were working last week, several of the organizations have adopted new pay ranges just in the last... In the last couple of weeks, so we've got to go back and update our data to reflect some of the competitors on this list and to comb through the data one more time to make sure that we're making accurate comparisons across the board. The other thing I want to disclaim in this, in our preliminary findings, is the fact that I'm speaking very broad generalizations, so that for your benefit, to give you kind of an idea, preview of where we're at and what to expect as we move forward. But I caution anybody that might see this presentation and try to make individual predictions as to what's going to happen to his or her pay range, his or her salary. We're just not at that point where those types of predictions can be made. So please accept these as kind of broad generalizations of what we think we're finding in the market and kind of a foreshadowing, if you will, of what we expect to happen in the pay plan. Generally, what we're finding is your pay ranges, while many of the pay ranges are generally in line with market, a fair number of them are lagging slightly behind market, probably 5% to 10%. But when we look at the actual pay of individuals on a very high level across the board, generally the pay of individual employees on average falls within the market. There are groups and categories and job families where that differs a little bit, but generally speaking, we expect to see the pay ranges come up a little bit, which may or may not impact the salary of individuals in the pay ranges. Specifically, at the low end of the pay plan, your lowest grades is probably where we're seeing one of the bigger differences, 10% to 20% below. A lot of this has to do with changes in the market right now as we speak. Things such as the economy picking up and construction booming in the area and peer organizations starting to make... To have movement in their pay plans is impacting competitiveness on the low end. When we look at positions like public safety, you're generally at market, in some cases slightly above market. What we find in the public safety arena is that there is a very narrow margin, if you will, for a lot of the key positions in public safety. The peer organizations in Metropolitan Atlanta keep very close tabs on one another, and generally, we don't find huge differences from one organization to the next. But there are some changes coming in the next couple of months as DeKalb and Fulton, and I think Gwinnett makes some moves in their plan, and some of the local cities as well. So we are seeing some movement there. Some of the technical and specialized positions in your pay plan we're finding are generally more significantly below market, on the neighborhood of 10% to 15%. Again, any individual classification may vary slightly from that number, there are certainly exceptions. But generally, we're finding that those areas are lagging the market, and we expect actual pay on average to be impacted by the ranges as it's falling below market. Whereas, upper-level professional positions seem to be generally in line with market. At the entry level or low level of those series of those job families, we're finding a little bit of a lag behind market, 10% to 15%. It varies a little bit from classification to classification, department to department as to where pay falls within that market rate, but we're seeing that on average, it's falling at the minimum of the level of the market. So we may need to make some adjustments there. And then generally speaking, your mid-level management to executive-level management also falls on the neighborhood of 15% to 25% below market. If you think about that for a second, a lot of that has to do with the peer organizations we're comparing you to. Cobb is considered one of the larger, more progressive of the counties in Metropolitan Atlanta, but you are also on the small side of the other organizations compared to Fulton, Atlanta, and DeKalb. And so when we make those types of comparisons, obviously, some of that may be due to size of organization, it may be due to location, being inside the perimeter versus outside the perimeter, and it may also have to do with decisions that other organizations have made politically in terms of where they are competitively in this market. But we are finding at a high level that that pay is falling below market as well. If I didn't mention anything, any specific group, it's just because there wasn't dramatic findings one way or the other. Again, some of your positions are at or above market, some of them are below, we expect to find that. And then just as we move forward, it's a reminder that we're not trying to pinpoint the market placement of any one particular position as much as we're trying to capture Cobb County's position in the market as a whole, taken across all of the benchmark positions. And so we'll craft a pay line that is reflective of the market trends as opposed to trying to chase specific dollar values for any one particular classification. In terms of where we are in moving forward, at the bottom of the timeline, you'll see that we are aiming to bring the findings to the Board of Commissioners at your meeting on February 23rd, asking for action, hopefully, adoption and approval in March. I believe that's March 8th, which means we're pacing ourselves in December and January and February to meet those marks. So we'll continue working on interviews in December. We'll continue our work on draft internal equity in December, and that will carry over into January. The market analysis is... The data is largely compiled, but as I said, we need to go back and do some updates to the data, and we need to do one more comb through and finalize our analysis of benefits. We'll be working on developing the draft pay plan in January and February, bringing it to key stakeholders in February for review, and then ultimately to the Board of Commissioners. So that's our timeline, a little bit about where we've been and what we've been up to. And with that, I will yield any questions or let you have the rest of your afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Did the board have any questions in particular?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I had some questions. First question I have is with respect to methodology. It was a slide seven. Right now, you're collecting data from employees and departments, and you're assessing that to ensure internal equity, and you're also assessing that with outside organizations to benchmark with them. And then there's a second portion here, he says, "The pay plan is customized to fit the client's unique culture, operational needs, management style, and compensation philosophy." How is that assessed? What do you look for?
A combination of things. A lot of it comes through the preliminary discussions that we have with management and stakeholders at the beginning of the process. A lot of it has to do with understanding Cobb and where you traditionally have been relative to the market and who you are as an employer. Some of it is going to come at the end, as we begin to present findings and get feedback, first at HR and county management, level of HR and county management level, feedback from the Oversight Committee as well, but then ultimately, as it comes to you all as a board in terms of fine-tuning any findings or recommendations that we have. So it comes from a variety of different places and has been kind of cumulative as we've gone along.
Okay. So you'll be communicating with the commissioners to also find out what our perspective is on that prior to you presenting something publicly?
Yes, ma'am. I'll work through county management to figure out the best way to get that, solicit that feedback and input, but we can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you. Also wanted to ask about the employee satisfaction study, which you provided will follow the presentation in March, the pay and class study. How does the employee satisfaction study dovetail into what you're doing?
It's really a parallel process. If you go back to how that process was undertaking, the original contract was for a classification compensation study, but the county was looking at the possibility or the potential of doing an employee satisfaction survey. I believe that was on the recommendation of the Compensation Committee. And they correspond very nicely. At the same time, they're kind of two separate things, so one doesn't impact the other, if that makes sense. But what it will do is if you move forward with the satisfaction survey, it's more than just compensation-related, but it's a vehicle by which you can get feedback and input from employees regarding things that are important in their employment at Cobb County.
Okay. When do you assess that we'll get that, the results of that survey?
That process, I think, will have to be worked out. It's to be determined. We haven't actually released the survey yet. I think the focus for management...
Oh, the employees haven't taken it yet?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
I think the focus has been shifted more towards the classification and compensation piece with the idea that we'll come back and look at the survey when we get through the bulk of the study.
Okay. And then, one final general question. I know this is referred to as a pay and class study, which may highlight wages, but certainly the compensation packages include other benefits.
Yes, ma'am.
So as you're assessing the different pay of various positions, are we looking at the entire compensation package? Because our pay might be lower, but we might offer something else above and beyond when it comes to other benefits.
Yes, ma'am. Benefits, what we call benefits analysis, is a key piece of the process in terms of our market assessment. Generally, what you'll find is we approach compensation in wage and salary from a one aspect and approach benefits of the other. Sometimes organizations want to come up with some fancy formula that says X number of salary dollars equals X points in a benefits package, but generally, what we find is that's not true. What we strive to do is make recommendations on both fronts, so that if you're competitive in the market with your pay ranges, and you're competitive in the market with your benefits, generally, overall compensation will be competitive. We're in the process of doing the benefits piece now. Little early to give you specific results, but broadly speaking, what we've found is that your benefits package is largely competitive with the rest of the market. We generally don't find a lot of variation from one peer local government to another. The bigger differences are going to fit within the county relative to private sector employers and things like that, but generally, relative to most of your peers. There's a few tweaks here and there that will come to light, but broadly speaking, your benefits package is fairly competitive. So at the end, as we develop a pay plan with competitive pay ranges, make recommendations, and give you findings on the benefits package, collectively, total compensation should work pretty well. And then, of course, there's always those intangible things like quality of life in Cobb County and the desire that employees have to work here versus other organizations. When you're competing with Atlanta and Fulton County, there's factors such as commute time and things like that that are... We won't obviously capture in that. commute time and things like that that are, we won't obviously capture in that type of process, but speak to who you are as an employer.
Okay. Are those things addressed in the employee sat survey at all?
Some of those are, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Woodford.
The survey, do you not think that some of those questions would impact the pay-in-class study? I mean, do you not think that's important to know what our employees are thinking as far as benefits or pay or management style or the Cobb way or anything? I mean, it seems to me that these two should go hand in hand.
I think they do go hand in hand in terms of how you maintain the pay plan over time and how you implement it moving forward. At the end of the day, classification and compensation is fairly direct and straightforward. You want to make sure positions are properly classified based on the jobs that they're performing, and that's job-specific. It's taking the employee out of the equation and looking at what that job requires. And so from that standpoint, employee satisfaction really doesn't factor in there. It's more of a question of, is that job properly classified according to the work that you're asking that position to do? And is that position, is that classification ranked according to the complexity and the value of that job to the organization? And then from the other component, of course, it's competitive in the market. What I think the Satisfaction Survey will address down the road is you implement and maintain the plan overall. It will give you feedback in terms of some of those things. Certainly, it does address things like compensation and benefits. There's a section on that as well, but it also speaks to things like management and leadership and feedback from all levels of the county to satisfaction in the job and things like that. So it does go hand in hand. One is not dependent upon the other, because at the end of the day, you've got to have a pay plan that is fair, that is competitive across the board, and from there, the feedback really gives you ongoing, an ongoing pulse of the employees, if you will, in terms of how well it's received and issues they may have.
Well, I understand that from a technology or a technical standpoint and a methodology standpoint, but from a board standpoint, from my decision-making, this board's decision-making is important to know that.
If I could address this, the distribution of the survey is a separate, total separate component, if you would, from the pay-in-class study. It's a pay-in-class study which we started, and then Compensation Committee also felt that it would be advantageous for the board and management team to know the opinions of the individual employee as it relates to things that are not as tangible as what's being addressed in the class and pay study. So yes, they are both between employee and employer, employee and a management, but the purpose of the pay-in-class study is to just do that, look at the characteristics associated with each of the parameters in which the job operates, not the person. The survey has to do with the relationships with the folks that are associated with it. Mr. County Manager, would you agree with that in terms of what we're trying to accomplish?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And when we look at that component from the employee satisfaction, it gives you an idea of what we need to bring back to the board to remain competitive in condition with the class and pay study, i.e. educational pay, i.e. pension, i.e. whatever. That comes back to be, we'll have to address that going forward in the future.
I think, understand that, Mr. Chairman. I think what I was trying to say is that I think this board has a component that is missing when we make decisions on pay-in-class study, because employee satisfaction, to me, is a great part of why people work here, why people stay here, and, you know, we're going to be asked to make a decision on pay-in-class before we have a survey. Is that correct?
No. You're, we could talk about this more in length earlier, but I think you're, the classification and compensation study is an analytical perspective.
I understand that, yeah.
The other is more of an analytical, or non-analytical, more of a subjective opinion piece as to how people feel about where they're at.
Right.
Okay. So we need to make sure our machine is running mechanically correct through the classification compensation study and then find out concurrently, but almost independently, and how the attitudes are associated with where they work.
Okay.
And so we, they're both very important to do, and they're both very important to look into relative to each other, but one shouldn't play into the creation of the other, only because that takes an individual who may be doing, may be either dissatisfied with his current position or that same position where the individual may be very happy with his situation, and that impacts our technical perspective and how we are competitive from the technical perspective. So that has to be there, but it doesn't have to necessarily, they don't necessarily have to be codependent on each other. And that's, I think, what, did I say it a different way?
No, I believe you've addressed it very well. Generally speaking, in actuality, Cobb is among a relatively small number of local governments that actually is pursuing and looking at this concept of employee survey. It does happen in other markets, but it's not common. It's, so I say that to speak, it'll provide you additional information moving forward that I think will be very valuable to the board in terms of your interaction with employees and your relationship to the employees. It is not a critical path through which the classification and compensation study needs to get developed and implemented. It's more of a tool that you have at your disposal moving forward after you get something in place, how you maintain it over time, and how you react and respond to issues of the employees will give you valuable information down the road, but it's not a critical path towards adopting a pay plan.
Do you have a approximate timeline for the survey to be completed?
At this time, I do not, but I'm sure we can get something.
That's being driven by the Compensation Committee.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to this. It's aggressive schedule. Let's try to keep up to it.
Do our best.
Tab three, finance. Good afternoon, Bill.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm here today to present a brief update on priority-based budgeting. Back in 2013, when we began the implementation of this, in the presentation here, I have a list of the municipalities throughout the U.S. that have either begun implementation or fully implemented this, and at the time in 2013, there were only five counties in the nation that had begun this process. This is, this process is dominated by cities due to the complexity of the process and the, more briefly, the simplicity of the cities versus the county structure. So this is a massive undertaking, being that only five counties in the nation have begun this, and only two in the state of Georgia, City of Roswell, and Cobb County. This process is broken down into two strategic initiatives, fiscal health, which Cobb has been doing for years. This is part of our existing plan that we've had in place, our existing budgeting process, and our existing finance methodology that we currently use. The long-term fiscal health is really what we're referring to when we talk about priority-based budgeting. The most important part of this presentation that I would like you to walk away with is some examples of what priority-based budgeting is and what it is not. Priority-based budgeting is a framework to align county services with citizen priorities. It's a tool to examine asset reallocation. It is a tool that assists the decision-making process by fundamentally altering how budget discussions take place. It is a tool that answers the following strategic questions. What are we in business to do? What exactly do we do? How do we figure out what is core or what is the highest importance? How do we know we are successful? How do we ask better questions that lead to better decisions about what we do and why we do it? What priority-based budgeting is not. It is not a budget-cutting tool. It is not an instrument that'll determine level of funding or level of service for a program. It is not a complete overhaul of the current budget process. It is a dual process. It is not a model that will solve every budget decision or problem or decision. It'll only shape our discussions as we move forward. This process is broken down into five steps: determining results, clarifying result definitions, identifying programs and services, value programs based on results, allocating resources based on priorities. The first three steps have all been completed by the county. Determining results was completed in December of 2013. The results is what we're in business to achieve. And the second part of this, which will come in the future, is a citizen engagement component, which we will go back and validate the results that the county has prepared and compare those with the citizens' priorities as well, but that'll come in the future. The second step is clarifying the result definitions. We created result maps detailing the factors that influence the way results are achieved. Specifically, one of our results is safe and secure community, and we further defined what exactly that means to have a safe and secure community. Step three, we have identified the programs and services, and that was completed in June of 2014. Currently, Cobb has approximately 2,800 programs, and that is a lot. As we move into the later stages of this process, such as scoring and costing, we should see program consolidation. The last two steps, four and five, are yet to be completed, but we're currently and fully engaged in step four, valuing programs based on results. This is, we're valuing these programs based on how they influence the county and achieving the results that we have identified. This is broken down into two steps, self-scoring, which departments score their own programs, and then they go through a peer review process with outside departments looking at their scores. The final step is allocating resources based on the priorities. Once we've completed our scoring, we will present that information to our consultants, the Center of Priority-Based Budgeting. They'll provide us with a diagnostic tool that we hope to present to the board in April of 2016. We do anticipate this being included in the budget discussions for our next biannual budget. And lastly, how it benefits the taxpayers. This maximizes the benefit of every tax dollar collected by aligning it with the citizens' programs or currently the county's programs, which will be further compared against the citizens' priorities, and ensures that every dollar spent is being evaluated against Cobb residents' priorities, which will also happen when we further engage with the citizen engagement piece. At this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Bill. The board have any questions?
Will you email us this presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
And where are we in the process of all the departments giving their input?
We have completed the program inventory, which all departments have provided, and now we're in the scoring phase, which they go through every program that they've identified, and they match it up with the results of the, that we've identified, basically the goals of the county, and they receive a score based on each one of those criteria. So we're basically in the self-scoring process, and then we'll move into the peer review process. So the final two steps are where we're at.
So we're, you've done, we've been involved with this about three years, two years?
We started in late 2013.
So we've done a lot of work in a short period of time-
Yes, sir.
Relative to everything else that's been going on in this last couple of years. So I'm going to give a shout-out to you and your team, and Jim and his leadership, but also to all the employees that have participated in getting this program moving forward on top of what they've already been doing, and that's been challenging.
Absolutely, sir. And we can take very little credit. Most of the work has really been performed by the departments, and we really appreciate their involvement and their help in the process.
As do we. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a question regarding the citizen engagement piece. When is that expected to occur?
We haven't determined exactly with the timeframe of completion. Typically, what we've seen from other counties and municipalities that have implemented this is they go through the whole process internally first, and then within a year or two, possibly three years after completion, and having more data, they go back and they use the citizen engagement component. And then we've seen other municipalities do the citizen engagement component upfront. So we've seen it a variety of different ways.
Okay.
And after discussion with the county manager and some of the presentations we've been to, we felt that it would be better to do the internal implementation first and then reach out to the citizens afterwards.
Okay, so the April deadline is just the internal deadline?
Exactly, the internal implementation.
Okay, can you go back to that timeline for a brief second? Sorry, I just want to look at-
Slide eight, steps to six. So we are in the value, valuing programs results, or valuing programs based on results, and we anticipate that the self-scoring being completed in February of 16.
Okay.
The peer review process of that being completed in March of 16. And then lastly, we anticipate bringing the diagnostic tool to staff and elected officials, hopefully in April of 2016, and plenty of time to have that be part of our biannual budget process discussions.
Okay. I just have somewhat of a concern with step five.
Sure.
As we're allocating resources based on priorities, if you look at the following slide, it heavily emphasizes alignment with citizen expectations.
That's correct.
But if we look at the timeline, we'll be utilizing this as a tool to assess priorities without that feedback.
That's correct. The expectations that we've prepared first was using staff, departments, and elected officials. So we've gathered all the results based on internal, but using, involving the Commissioners as well. So we feel like we do have some feel for what those results are going to be, and that's where the citizen engagement component will come in the future, is to hopefully validate those results. There may be some changes in the future, but that's kind of the approach that we took. So we do not have the direct citizen input. We have it more through the elected officials at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
And I could just speak personally, you know, I know that the people that we all serve, they vary greatly in opinion, and from looking at some of the processes that we have going on right now with the Cobb 2040 study, we also had the update to our CTP. It required, it was a multiple-year process to get that public feedback-
Sure.
-in determining the direction of the county. And I just want us to not, I know we want to use this tool as a helpful tool. I would just caution us to be, not to be too aggressive in doing it without public feedback, because even in the statement that we're looking to the public to validate it, almost puts a slant on what the public's input is going to be, because they might have different priorities, which might run counter to what we have internally, because we just see things from a different lens. So I would just encourage us, again, for us to have a very robust program in setting the priorities based off of that public feedback.
Absolutely. And our results are broken down into internal results and external results. So safe and secure community would be one of our external results, but a lot of our departments within the county service other departments, and that's where the citizen component won't come into play nearly as much.
Okay.
But all of those, like, we'll have IS that may service, you know, obviously, public safety, which would be feeding the safe and secure community, which, those are the results that we'll want to identify and get confirmation from the citizens.
Okay, very good. And then just another observation, too. I know we, this has been a long time in the making, even started before me being here, and right now, we're going through, if we haven't already gone through, a process of polling persons internally to get their feedback on priorities, but it's very likely that priorities can even change on an annual basis, if not even shorter than that, and don't know if we have a mechanism to assess the changing priorities of the county and assessing how that's going to feed into this tool that comes out.
And that's one of the things that we've seen through other municipalities who've implemented, is every few years, they'll go back and reevaluate their results or their goals to determine the priorities. Are they still relevant? Because they, as you said, they can change. And the nice thing is, once, the hardest part of this process is identifying the programs and scoring them. So if we change results, it's really a small transition. So the initial implementation is where the bulk of the work, or majority of the work, will come in. After that, it's just an updating of the process. So it's not nearly as time-intensive.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
The entire purpose of this process was to get us more in line with what the community wants and is willing to pay for, and to how much they're willing to pay for. Prior to this process, we had a budgeting process where staff brought forward to us recommendations based on what their feedback was from Commissioner and the community, what they thought the priority ought to be, and where the emphasis ought to be in terms of not only programming, type of program, but the funding associated with it. The purpose of this is to quantify more accurately, if you would, what we do have, the costs associated with it, the benefit that's provided by each, and if you would, a cost-benefit analysis for each individual service, and what, in turn, the public can expect for that dollar invested in that particular program, and enable us to be more responsive to the public. to be more responsive to the public. The initial program was, is being weighed against our strategic plan that this Board approved, and as we go forward, this is actually a step towards doing exactly what we need to be, but we need to go through this process of, you say, self-evaluation, quantifying what we do have, the value associated with it versus the expense. And I think that's where, this is where the Board has been asking us to go, to be more responsive. So, I think this is exactly what we need to do to be more responsive to the community. And I think the way we're going about it is accurate, get our ducks in the row so we know, get our ducks in a row so we know exactly what it is we are providing, what the cost is, what the benefit is to it, and what's the cost-benefit analysis to that, so that we can make a value, so we can present it to the public and make, they can then make a more informed decision as to what they want to support. So, it's a good job, you guys are working hard, the community will have an opportunity to weigh in, and as every budget, every annual budget, we'll make adjustments based on priorities that are before us in that regard, as we have in the last five years. So, good work to you. We appreciate your team, and we thank you so much. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, and going back to your comments and to Commissioner Cupid, the big, the largest workload has been trying to identify those programs and get them into the system, and once we get that diagnosed, we, for the first time, will have all of our programs in a system, and then you could go back and the changes would be much easier because you got them all in one place.
Absolutely. So-
With that, nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, we are finished with our work session. We'll pick up tab number four tonight at our regular call meeting at 7:00. Thank you.